So.
Nothing will happen, but just let it happen.
Do you need me to send it?
You don't have to.
I'm on my phone.
Yeah.
Who's it there?
You're on it.
He's got it right there.
We have alternate.
Okay. Hey, I'm gonna be.
Okay, Bob's not gonna be here, so we'll need an excuse. No, he won't be here tonight. Mm-hmm. So, yeah, he's at the hospital tonight.
That's great.
So, you know when? Are we all set? I can't see what time it is. Do you have six?
Six.
Six, alright.
Yeah, exactly. Here, try again.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and call this study session to order. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. And we have one council member that's not here tonight, but thank you for being here. And we'll go ahead and turn it over to the chief.
Mayor, before I get started on our PowerPoint, I just wanted to say, been doing this for four decades and been in Casa Grande since 2016. And personally and professionally, I think that this proposal is probably the, one of the top two decisions the council had to do, first being body cameras. And I think that this proposal, the body cameras, was for transparency, officer safety. I think this proposal is also for transparency, officer safety, efficiency. But I also think it's for overall community safety. So with that, we'll get, we'll get going. I'll try not to bore you with PowerPoint. This, this presentation is based on Flock Safe City Initiative. And some of the things this will be addressing is fragmented systems within our city, reactive policing, and lack of real-time intelligence for our officers and for first responders. As you know, in 2022, we started our relationship with Flock. And in 2023, we had 22 cameras put up within our city. The success of those only 22 cameras, when they were operational, we were able to identify and recover 212 stolen cars within our city limits. We have over 160 arrests that are directly, that we can directly tie back to the Flock system and the LPRs. And our officers almost 600 times have put in vehicle descriptions to help with our investigations since we've had Flock in 2023. Our success with them has led us down the road to where we want to increase the Flock presence in the city of Casa Grande and help us with our efficiency, help us with our investigations, and help us with our ability to fight crime and keep our community safe. Some of the current challenges that bring this forward, we do have a fragmented technology system across the city departments. I believe today, Brian and I counted, we have five different kinds of cameras operating within city buildings and city structures. And those cameras do not integrate. We, when we need them, when our officers need them, we have to figure out who to go to to get that film. Some of them are not even, they don't keep the film, the real time. So what we're hoping to do with this proposal is take the city system and bring it under one umbrella, if you will, where we can observe it when we have, when we have staff there to observe it, when we can retrieve it, when we, when we need to retrieve it. And we think that's gonna make us a little bit, that alone is gonna make us more efficient and more safe as a community. Limited real-time intelligent capabilities. Our officers are going on calls right now that are dispatched with no additional information unless somebody calls in. And like it or not, we're living in a, in a world right now that is increasingly dangerous, not only for community members, but for our officers. And without having real-time intelligence prior to going to these calls or en route to these calls, it puts more people at risk, both community members and our police department. We think that with the, with this initiative, that the real-time intelligent, well, we know this, the real-time intelligence capabilities are limitless with this. On the reactive versus proactive policing models, what, what this system is gonna do, if, if we get it approved ultimately, is they store video for 30 days. And plus, and prior to that, we are gonna be able to log into cooperating private businesses, private home cameras, individual cameras, all-city cameras, school cameras, and have access to them to where we can put in information and search for things that we think is gonna make us, give us viable tips and help us in some of these investigations. And a lot of times, we believe wholeheartedly that it's gonna give us actual evidence of crimes being committed, which helps us even, even more so. The inefficient resource allocation. On part of that is that this is gonna enable us to be able to handle calls, as strange as it may sound, and it's being done across the country already, but it's gonna be able to, we're gonna be able to handle calls for service from a room in our police department, whether that be with cameras, whether that be with drone as a first responder. There's gonna be calls that we are gonna be able to handle and put into CADs that it was handled by drone as a first responder or real-time information center. And it's gonna keep our officers from having to go out and check on certain calls. And we use it, Brian and I were talking today, perfect example. Get a call for a fight on a convenience store parking lot. Our officers roll to that, get there, everybody's gone. Well, those officers could have been doing something else in that timeframe. We launch a drone, we might have a camera in the area. Or even better yet, we, we are tied into that business's cameras. We see those, those people, those suspects already left. Calls handled, we don't waste time going out there. Our officers are on to something different. That's where the efficiency part of this, part of the efficiency part comes into play. Limited cross-departmental collaboration. You'll see in some further slides here, this is a police department initiative because we're the ones handling it. This is a citywide project. This is gonna impact, if, if you all agree to this eventually, this is gonna impact several departments within our city and help us. For instance, on, on, I'll, I'll look at the collaboration. We respond to a lot of fire calls. Fire responds to a lot of our calls. We'll have real-time information to be able to set up. If fire needs us to block certain roads, we'll be able to have a bird's eye view of that. It'll help with that, that scene management. If Kevin and them have, we get calls on street lights out, we send there, we look at a camera, or we send out a drone. We're able to tell Kevin and them, hey, it's flashing yellow in all directions. Traffic's moving great. We're good for right now. So it helps that. And it's not that we don't communicate now. This is real-time communication. This is, this is actual visual justification for, for some of the decisions that we'd make. I'm gonna turn it over to Brian on this.
So as the chief said, the Flock Safe City Initiative really provides us the tools to enhance public safety. And I'm just gonna go over what the Safe City project will give us. So we already have license plate readers. We currently have 22 of those. We would get an additional 78. We would get 100 live video monitoring cameras. Those will be placed in conjunction with the LPRs. They would be placed in city parks. They would be placed in areas where we have large community events. For example, the, the electric light parade route or street fairs that we have downtown. We would have audio detection for a gunshot. We would have a one-mile radius. Now, that radius isn't in a perfect 360-degree circle. We've looked at our calls for service where we have most of our gunshot crimes, and we can blanket that area. We would have drones as a first responder. We would have four drones. So we wouldn't have four separate launch sites. We would have two launch sites. The reason for two in each launch, launch site is if a battery is getting low, then another drone can be deployed, can take over while the other one comes home, is automatically recharged and ready to go. We would have mobile security trailers. So in areas where we don't have LPRs, and I'll, I'll use a, a street fair, and we've identified an area where we're lacking coverage, we could put a mobile trailer there and get the coverage that we need. Flock OS is the control platform. If you'll kinda in your brain imagine a Google map. And on that map, whenever we get a call for service, that'll be plotted on the map. So the operator can look and see what cameras they have available. They can click on those cameras and get the real-time information. They would see where their drones are. Maybe we have a cooperating business that has allowed us access to their cameras. We can link into those. Or maybe there's a home that doesn't wanna give us access to their cameras, but would cooperate and let us know that, hey, I have a camera. You can come by my home if there's a crime in the neighborhood, and I'll let you see what, what I have. That would be all on the Flock OS platform. That's not available just to the person in the real-time information center. That's available to every officer in the street. It's all permission-based. So an officer may not have all the permissions as a sergeant. A sergeant may not have all the permissions as a deputy chief. Flock Nova is an investigative platform. So right now, the police department uses a wide variety of databases to get information. What Nova does is it takes all of that, puts it into one spot where it can be searched more efficiently. The Flock 911. So officers will be able to hear 911 calls in their vehicles and also in the real-time information center before they're even dispatched. So if you can imagine a 911 call coming out, the person in the real-time information center is hearing that, is able to click on cameras, might be even able to launch a drone before the first officer is ever even dispatched. So that's where the, the quickness of our response times come into play. By that time, they're giving information to the responding officers, allowing the officers to better prepare for what they're could encounter. The community cameras, I just touched on those a minute ago. So the city would have a public website. And on that public website, it would give the public information on how they could register their cameras with the city. The first one would be a private business. If I have a Ring camera at my home, I could let the police department know. So if a crime happens in my neighborhood, that would populate on Flock OS. So an officer would know, okay, I know I can go there to potentially get some footage of what happened. On the business side of the house, businesses can opt in to allow us to have real-time access to their cameras. That's when we talk about the schools. So we'll take Union High School. An event happens at the school, we get the call. The real-time information center can start looking at those cameras, providing information to the responding officers. The city cameras would be the same thing. It's all, it's a, it's a gateway, a piece of hardware that would be installed on city cameras. So if an event happened at City Hall, at the Parks and Rec, wherever a city has a camera, we would have access to that, again, to get real-time information and provide that to the officers or fire department or whomever it would, it would need to be given to. The installation, maintenance, upgrades are all covered. And any new technology we would get currently, Flock has a couple new products that haven't been released, gave us a little bit of a teaser just to ask more questions about it. But we would get that software. It's, it's so new, there hasn't been a price associated to it yet, but we would have that.
So like I said previously, I know we're the ones running this, and there is no doubt in anybody's mind that this is a first responder tool. But there's multi-department applications to this. We feel like this is a city project, not a police project. We just happen to be the ones spearheading it. Brian alluded a little bit to the faster response times. Part of that is the Flock 911, where our officers will be hearing calls before they're actually dispatched. The other part is if, once we get these drones up and, and responding to calls, the drone flies as, as the bird flies and gets there quicker and is already putting out information to our officers. We were at a, at a conference with Flock, and they used an example of one that we didn't even think about. They sent one to a domestic violence call. And you'd think, well, why would you send a drone to an inside-the-house call? The drone gets there way before the officers get there. They see a gentleman walk out back, bury something in his backyard. He knows the police are coming. He takes off. The drone pilot follows him to where he's hiding. Once they get there and talk to the wife who was the victim, she says he is not allowed to have handguns. He had a handgun. The drone directs the officers to the guy that was hiding. They take him into custody, get a search warrant for the, for the curtilage of the residence. They go there, they recover a gun. And instead of sending him to jail for a domestic violence, they send him for a longer stretch for being in possession of a firearm. And he is prohibited. So our response times will be quicker, mainly through the air, but also through what our officers are hearing. We hope that some of these calls that for service are handled by the drone as a first responder or the, the person that's operating the real-time information center, that can handle some calls where our officers don't even have to be dispatched. And I know that's gonna be hard. Some people are gonna, that's gonna take some education on our part. But it frees up our officers to go to some calls where they're actually really, really needed. Better field coordination, that goes without saying. We're gonna be able to, we're gonna be able to have eyes on, on things from the air, putting our people where they need to be put. They have infrared, they, these drones are state-of-the-art, and they're gonna help us on the coordination of things. Real-time intelligence, we've already touched on that a little bit. But when these, when the drone gets launched to a certain call, and I'm gonna use an example that I just read about today in Utah. The officer went to a domestic disturbance, got shot and killed. They're calling on the radio, nobody, nobody answers. Second officer shows up, gets shot and killed. Calling him on the radio, nobody answers. Third officer with a canine shows up. Him and his dog both get shot, thankfully didn't die. They didn't have real-time intelligence. If you put a drone in the air, the first officer maybe, sadly, the second and third officer probably not. That's the kind of real-time intelligence gonna keep our people safe. Well, and that just went into officer safety enhancement. That, that goes without saying. For the fire department, enhanced situational awareness for safer responses. We can launch these drones when the fire department goes out to a call. A lot of times, they will see that, they will get there before the fire department will get there, give them an idea of what it looks like. They will have the capability to view this on their MDCs so they know what they're going into before they even get there. Whether they need more units, maybe they don't need as many units as they thought they did, but it gives them an idea for an awareness of what they're walking into. And that goes along with the earlier eye-on-scene assessment. That's with the drone. Better cross-functional collaboration with law enforcement. I think I touched on that earlier. We go to their calls, they go to our calls. When we go to their calls and they need traffic and things like that, it's easier for us to take that assignment when we actually can look at the scene from the air and be able to deploy our people where we need them the most. Increased firefighter safety, I think that goes without saying. It is, they'll have an idea of what we, you know, when the drone gets there or when the cameras are there on something, they'll have an idea of what they're facing before they even get there. Community services. One of the things that's really good, and Brian and I did this for, I don't know how many weeks till we got tired of it. When something happened in our parks, i.e. the last one where the guy did the donuts and disrupted and, and ruined a bunch of work that Danny's people put in, we looked at each other and said we'd had a camera there. We'd have known who that was. Vandalism problems, the same thing. We, we have, Flock has been really, really good with us as far as mapping out. They took all the data from our calls and in anticipation of this going through, because we couldn't wait for that, they mapped all our calls, took all our calls that, and they put it on a map. And they made a suggestion of where I'd put a camera, where I'd put an LPR. We spent three hours the other day. We moved a couple of them, tweaked a little bit. But what that has done is it's covered our parks and, and it's covered areas where our community members might have events. And it's, it, it just makes it safer for everybody. Observational recreation and facility usage. These cameras are gonna be on at places that people are using the parks for Danny's people. And, and they will have access to viewing what's going on. And I know the big thing in the public is Big Brother. We're not looking at somebody sneaking off to have a smoke. But we are looking at somebody that wants to go up and rob somebody. They're, they're the ones we're looking at. That'll allow Danny and them to have a observation. These cameras, when they're, they can be set up so that they move every few seconds for 360 degrees. They also set on motion that when the park is closed after hours, if they pick up motion in that park, our people get an alert, Danny's people get an alert. That way, we don't have to worry about waking up the next morning and somebody taking a walk in the park and find out that somebody had been in there for two hours, seeing how many donuts they could do in their, in their new pickup truck. Special event and crowd management, that's pretty obvious. We have these cameras initially where we think we're gonna put them. It covers all the areas that we have our city events. It covers the downtown area. That was a big thing here a couple of weeks ago with the burglaries. It covers that area of town. And we also have, like Brian said earlier, we have a mobile camera that we can take out and put at certain events that we may not have camera pointed directly at that, but we will at this point. Trailhead activity. We get a lot of calls on hikers that hear shots fired where they probably shouldn't hear shots fired. And we have to send an officer out, they gotta try to track this down. Well, when you send a drone out over that, it covers a lot more space, a lot quicker, a lot more efficiency, with a lot more efficiency. And we'll be able to help monitor some of the things on CG Mountain, things like that. Girl Scout Mountain. People get hurt, people get lost. Great technology instead of putting somebody out on foot. Public works for Kevin's people. I already mentioned the signal malfunctions that, that would be easy to identify. The illegal dumping, some of the places we have some of these cameras. I think that's a, that's a big thorn in everybody's side that loves this city. I'm still amazed when I drive down a, a road and I'm enjoying myself and I look over and see somebody's trash. We can't be everywhere at once, but the cameras can be. And the aerial views can be. Graffiti, same way. Put it in the parks, we had a lot of problems. You know about our cleanup efforts with other city departments last year up by the Little League fields? Well, they come in and they tag at night. Well, now they're gonna be tagging, and they're gonna be on camera, and we're already gonna have an alert, so we don't have to wait until daylight to figure out somebody did something. The traffic analytics. These Flock cameras actually keep track of every single car. And by track, they count every single car. I can tell you to the car how many people went down past one of our LPRs. So we figure that might help somebody. Maybe it'll help Kevin and them where they don't have to throw the two rubber things across the road, save them some time there. Pre-arrival intelligence for issues, for like downed power lines or flooding. I know when I first got here, the big joke was we had flooding down on one of the streets down by Florence. And one of my guys went to investigate the flooding and decided to drive a car through three feet of water, ruined a car. We don't have to do that anymore with this program.
Wanna talk about security?
Sure. So on the security side, all the information has end-to-end encryption, so we don't have to worry about, or less worry about people hacking into our information. It's CGS compliant, so it meets all the DPS requirements for security. As I talked about earlier, there's role-based permissions. So I'll give the drone pilot example. If I'm a drone pilot, I may have access to launch a drone. Obviously, if I'm not a drone pilot, then I couldn't launch a drone. The audit trails is a big thing. So anytime an officer logs into the Flock system and searches a license plate, they've gotta put a case number. There has to be a reason why they did it. It also audits, they have their login, so we know specifically who logged in, who searched the license plate, how many times they searched the license plate. And that data is kept. There, if ever a complaint that came about improper use, we would be able to easily track that information. Multi-factor authentication. You know, we do the SSO. I'm not certain what that acronym stands for. I know it's big with the IT people. But you, you, nobody can just log in using my, using Brian Ramirez's password. There's a little more that goes into it, keeping the, the infrastructure safe. For the PTZ cameras and the LPR, it's a 30-day retention, and it purges on its own, whether we like it or not. The information goes away after 30 days. So if there's evidence that we need, we need to save that, or we're going to lose it.
And we mark it as evidence.
Yes, and we mark it as evidence. And then we already have policy with our LPRs. We're gonna have to develop new policy because we're gonna have some new technologies that we're not currently using right now, but that will be in place.
So the Safe City package, and you, and we're gonna get to the slide here in a minute that I know you can't wait for. That's the finance part of this. But I will tell you in advance, it is actually, and I'm not a finance guy, and my boss would tell you that, but it is budget-friendly structuring because you have predictability on what lies ahead. The technology has proven itself time and time again for us already. We've alr, we've already mentioned the automatic upgrades. I will tell you, we were at this, at this conference the other week. They rolled out some stuff, some, two new programs. The gentleman that was presenting said, this hasn't even come out yet. We don't know how much we're gonna charge for it. But this is the program. And I looked, and we haven't introduced our Flock friends yet, but I looked at Hanzo, and I told him, I said, we want that. And he goes, you don't have a contract yet. I go, we want that. We get to the airport, he texts back and goes, you got it. So there, we're getting this technology improvements, and we're not even really a customer in this Safe City yet. So I have no doubt that that's gonna happen. And, and I'm gonna segue here a minute. This is a 10-year proposal. Think 10 years back, what technology was, AI was. Nobody would imagine where we're at today. And the next 10 years on the technology improvements that we're gonna get for nothing if we do this program, it takes a mind a lot brighter than mine to even try to. It takes a mind a lot brighter than mine to even try to imagine what's going to be available for us out there. The comprehensive support, installation, maintenance and training is included. Flock has been wonderful with the 22 cameras we already have. We had, I think we've only had one damaged. They came back and repaired it. And that was not equipment fault. That was vehicle versus Flock camera. Vehicle won. But they came back and they fixed that for us. The training part is included. Brian and I met the president of Flock. And he had said to us in our meeting that he's going to have one of his employees come down here for the first three or four weeks and work with whoever we have in that real-time crime or real-time information center to make sure that we're properly trained and to teach us how to use all the equipment. So that's a good commitment on theirs. The 20% long-term savings, you'll see that here in a little bit. So we're figuring, how do we prove the worth of this equipment? Because this is really, and you can't sugarcoat it. This is a big investment for the city of Casa Grande. So we come up with some performance measures and our efficiency measures. Reduction of investigative time and improved clearance rates. I feel like that's going to be a no-brainer. That's going to be easy for us to prove because we're going to be quicker. We did talk to some people that have some of these real-time information or crime centers, they call it. We call it an information center because we think it's more than just police. And some of their things went up. Their use of force may have went up a little bit because, only because they're getting so much better getting there before the bad guy leaves or running into bad guys. So we think that's going to help our clearance rates and our investigative time. Free patrol officers up from certain routine calls that can be handled with the technology. We've already talked about that. We're going to track calls cleared by the drone as a first responder and calls cleared by the real-time information center. Officer safety through increased situational awareness. The information that's going to be available to these officers en route to a call and being able to hear the the actual 911 call and having somebody in a, in a room with cameras and with drone capabilities. Officers are going to have a lot more information available to them before they get to a call than they do today. Our felony and misdemeanor arrests and stolen vehicle recoveries linked to Flock technology will increase. I have no doubt about that. We've had really good success with our 22 cameras. But I think what frustrates us, and I know, I say us, but I know it frustrates me and Brian, is we have certain cameras that get hit with a stolen car and then the car vaporizes. Because we don't have enough cameras to track where that car is actually going. So we've had some slip through us. Drone deployment response time, and I've already talked about that, cleared by DFR drone as a first responder, cleared by real-time information center. Keep track of how many calls are actually handled where we don't have to dispatch a vehicle to. And then also the video usage and criminal proceedings are viewed for investigations. With the PTZ cameras up, there's no doubt in my mind that we're going to have a lot of evidentiary value in these cameras that we're going to help make some of our cases in court. Staffing. Obviously, it needs staffed, right? AI intelligence is great, but it, but it needs a human touch at some point. We need people to either go to the calls or we need people to give out the information. What we have done through the help of Flock is they have taken our data and compiled it and our records people, Kim and Amy mainly, have taken our data and they have compiled a list of when we get the most calls, when we get the most priority calls, what days of the week, what hours of the day. That's how we're going to start staffing this if it's approved as our dedicated hours of operation. We're going to base it on data, not assumption. And I think that's going to be important. We had one officer that we were talking, Brian was talking and this officer come up and said, I want to really be involved in this. I think it's great. And we're going to use that officer as our main real-time information center person. The good thing about that is he comes from a, a unit that won't take away from patrol response and it won't take away from detectives. He's in one of the units that don't impact staffing on either one of those. Plus, he's a drone pilot, which really helps us out. Cross-trained personnel from patrol and investigations and some of our civilians. We think that once this program starts having success, that we're going to have to tell people that they can't come back and work back there if they're available. If somebody's over, if we're over our staffing level and things like that. But we're going to try to cross-train as many people as we can and use them in, to fill in some of the hours to maybe either expand the hours or fill in when Chris may not be available. Reserve officers, we've already talked to some of them, which would be the best source for us because they know the city, they know policing. We've talked to a couple of them that they want to do the reserve hours in the real-time information center to help out. They're interested in that, which would be good for everybody. We could either expand the hours or make sure that our hours that we needed covered are covered. Eventually, and council knows that when we go into technology, we usually use RICO money for a year and I try to get data and then we come back and tell you how great this data is and then we ask the city to pay for something. We plan on doing the same thing, to be honest with you. We're hoping that the return on investment on this shows that maybe we ought to hire somebody else too. And we have, currently, we keep two, we have two CSO positions that are part-time that we cannot fill. Nobody wants to work CS, as a community service officer, part-time hardly. So eventually, if our ROI proves right, there's going to be a time that we're coming in front of you, Larry and everybody, and asking for that position to be full-time. We hope. Here's the slide that y'all couldn't wait to see. Obviously, technology is expensive. I'm sitting here with a $1,000 phone. Brian's sitting there with a $1,000 phone. Technology is expensive, right? What Flock has done is they have taken a program and put it together so that the first four years are gradually increasing. We asked for a CIP this year that was awarded to us by the city with your blessing, that was $144,000. And it was 17 cameras and 10 more LPRs for 144,000. Year one, we're into this program with all this that we've discussed for $165,000. Year two, it goes up. Year three, it goes up gradually. Year four, it goes up again. Year five through 10, it is the price for the technology that we're receiving in year one. The drones themselves, the PTZ cameras and the LPR cameras themselves, if you were to buy them by themselves, is, is over $1.3 million. As is. There are recurring costs associated with this. We will have to have a standalone internet. We feel like we can cover that with our either RICO or donation line. There's a gateway firewall that, that needs to be implemented in this. That, you alright? There's a gateway firewall that has to be initiated with this program, but it needs to be replaced every seven or eight years. That's down the road. Routing and switching equipment, same thing. Seven plus years before it's replaced. The workstation, computer replacements. That's, that will, that will fall into the regular city rotation of computers. IT has worked very closely with us on this. Josh, Ricky and Aaron and Brenda's people, they have been in on this from the get-go. They've given us some of these figures or some of the things that will be recurring cost. And as with anything, there's going to be recurring costs. The standalone internet would start off immediately. And like I said initially, I think we can, we can cover that. So I'll go to available funding and future funding. Our state representatives were good enough to fight to get us $300,000 in FY26 budget for the state. They've been very good on that. That was more than we asked for. That was a lot more than we expected. We currently have 544,000 in FY26 camera CIP projects. That, there was, Danny's group has 155,000 plus a $45,000 rollover from last year. We had a $144,000 project. City manager's office had a $200,000 project. Now, what we do with this is we make sure that all those cameras that are put up are compatible. And we know who's viewing them. We know where to go if we need the information. We have a direct feed to those cameras. There's also obviously a buildup for the room that we're getting in or that we have identified for this. Our RICO funds and our donation line are being used to build this room. And it's not cheap. I'm going to be honest with you. The furniture's not cheap. The TVs aren't, well, they are kind of cheap, but they're effective. But the, the furniture in there, some of the things that has to be done in there to get this a plug-and-play operation, if this is approved. We're handling that through RICO and our donation line. And the only thing that will have to change on that, eventually things wear out, and that was the recurring cost that we talked about a second ago. We've already applied for two, I think since I wrote this, maybe our third grant related to this, trying to get money from other, other sources to help fund this on the out years. And quite honestly, I think one of the things that with the Flock, the way they set this up, where they show you exactly, there's no hidden costs in this. We can, I can tell you six years from now how much we're going to owe. I can tell you four years from now how much we're going to owe to the penny. There is no hidden costs. There's no increases in this. The out years, there's going to be a time when we're going to have to sit down and we're going to have to think about it budgetarily. And when I say we, I don't mean the police department and you. I mean everybody. Because I think this is going to actually help the entire city. And I don't want the strain of this and the cuts on this or anything, the discussion on this for somebody to come and ask me what I'm going to, what I'm going to do without on the police department. Because I think this is a city project, quite honestly. The good thing about this contract and Brett and Mark were really, really good about redlining their contract and getting their things in. It's already been reviewed. And they put in a deal and, and Flock has this. It's a non-appropriation clause. Which if something happens in the future that we, the economy tanks, we don't have the money. Then all the city council has to do is give a 30-day written notice to Flock that we're not appropriating the funds. And if it's a million three and we're only going to appropriate a million, then Flock comes and takes $300,000 worth of equipment away from us. And we keep everything else intact. So, I mean, to me, that shows a lot of faith in their equipment and the ORI. Because they're willing to have council come out in a couple of years and say, you know what? We're not going to pay for this. And then they'll come and take that equipment away. And it doesn't penalize us at all. So what I didn't say in the other deal, what I didn't add up the figures around this. We currently have $844,000 for camera projects in the city for this year. The first three years of Flock comes to 944,000. So in an environment where you're talking tens of millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars, $100,000 is all we're lacking for the first three years. And, and I don't know why, I don't think that's a bad thing. I think we have the first three years locked in. I think this is probably, this proposal, this idea, this concept, to me, in 40-some years of being a policeman, the last time I was probably this excited is when they went from a six-shooter to a semi-automatic. Now, Brian and I will tell you, it's when they went from a horse to a patrol car, but that was the year before I got on. But this proposal, this whole thing, I think, is, is exciting. It is in our best interest. It's other departments' best interest. I honestly think, and I wouldn't be coming here and asking you to spend, sign on a $10 million, 10-year deal if I didn't believe it wholeheartedly. I think it's the best thing for our community as far as community safety goes. And I think it's really going to be, and I've used this to the point that I'm tired of hearing myself say it. I think this is a game changer. It's a game changer in policing. I think we have the opportunity, we have two choices. We can chase technology and never catch it. We'll never catch technology. Or we can jump in right now on the front of technology and ride that wave wherever it takes us and be better at what we do. And I think this is an opportunity for us to jump in, embrace this technology, prove its worth, get your return, get our return on investment. And I think in the out years, we're going to be meeting and talking about how can we not afford to do this? That's how much faith I have in the, in the capability of this program. So that's our last slide. We do have some Flock friends. If you have any technical questions that are way above Brian and I? Or we'll answer any questions y'all have, I hope. We'll answer them.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Wow, you are excited.
I am excited.
He's usually not that excited to be here.
Mayor, he's been practicing that presentation for two weeks.
Only to learn.
No, thank you. Thank you for being here too. Any questions or comments from the council?
Get a comment real quick. Appreciate, chief, y'all bringing this with great detail. And as you were talking, I was just thinking about the first town hall meeting that we had. If I'm not mistaken, the community spoke and the top thing was health and safety. Is that correct?
Public safety.
Public safety. Public safety. And I believe that this fits right there. And I also believe if you put it off, it's going to cost you more. And we've known what that has done before. My other question, I believe you answered it. This is a one-man in that center. There's only one person, right? That can handle that?
That's where we're starting at.
That's where we're starting at. And then we can evolve maybe into a couple, maybe. Yeah. But I believe that this is something that really would help our city. And we already heard of the data from the 22 cameras that we already have. And it's been picking up some people that are coming in, stolen vehicles, a whole bunch of other things that we heard from other states, and we're catching them right here in Casa Grande because of the camera system that we do have. So I believe that this would enhance what we do have and make it better for us too.
I just have a couple of quick little, the drones. What's the mileage on those things? We have a pretty spread out city. I mean, how far do those things go? I mean,
They have a, each drone can do 38 square miles.
38 square miles before, before it needs to recharge?
They have a flight. Hansa, you're going to have to help me on this.
Hey, Mayor, Council. How are you? Hansel Barudy, I'm your Flock Safety Representative. So for the Drone as First Responder program, what we would do is we would have two drones at each launch location.
Right.
Right. And each launch location would be able to cover a three and a half mile radius. So that will cover you for 38 square miles based off that three and a half mile radius.
Okay. So how long can they stay a flight though for that three and a half, are they out for?
So the reason why they can cover that three and a half mile radius is due to the battery life on each drone. So it's roughly about 40 minutes of flight time and also the speed. So it's 49 miles per hour. You know, that's those drones. So the interoperability piece, right? We're talking about like gunshot detection or LPR hit. Gunshot goes off before the 911 call comes in. Drone is dispatched directly to where that happened.
Like you said, as the crow flies, I mean, it's just be lining right to that spot. So that's incredible.
And council, they have, these drones automatically tell when they're on a low battery life. And they actually go back and they re-dock. And I think from zero power to full power is less than 20 minutes.
It's about 20 minutes.
Yeah. And then the other drone, obviously.
Do they run like a relay? Like if one comes and, if one's on its way back, does the other one launch immediately to catch up real time to what, what they missed?
We're hoping we can get the FAA to do that. Whereas right now, that's not how it works. We can fly one, one drone at a time. So the other one has to come back before that same pilot could fly the other one out.
Okay, just, just a logistical question. The other question I had is what other cities in Arizona are using this currently or in the United States or what are we doing?
Drone As First Responder in terms of?
This, this whole, this whole system, Flock, this whole, like this system that, that, the sheriff, the sheriff. I'm sorry Chief. That the chief is presenting this, this whole deal, I mean, how, how many other cities have implemented this entire program?
So to the extent of Casa Grande's definitely at the forefront of what everybody else is doing. However, like if you took, look at cities like Tolleson, they have seventy-three license plate readers. And we're talking about a six, seven square mile city, they have no cold cases essentially. You know, we take a look at Drone As First Responder, we're talking Mesa, Scottsdale, Sholo, Cottonwood. They've adopted Flock Safety's Drone As First Responder Program, just to leave a few.
But I believe we'd be the first one in the state to have this package.
That's awesome.
And have all the technology.
I love seeing on the forefront of technology, especially down here in Casa Grande. Yeah, this is awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mayor?
Chief, I have a lot of questions and you answered most of them in your presentation.
Absolutely.
And thanks Brian, I know a lot of that had to do with you, but thanks. But you know, two, two things you, you, since you started here and we started working together, is, is you wanted to do more, more patrol cars, take home cars and I was skeptical. And the body cameras. And both of them have gone very well. So, I trust you with a lot of these things. One of the things that I was concerned about going forward here is like, now we'll get more call volume, we've got more stuff going on. Do we need more patrol officers? And you kind of hit on it a couple of times, but I mean, point blank, are we going to need more officers to respond to these calls? Or is this going to help reduce the calls?
They, it's going to help reduce some calls. But there has to be a human element.
Absolutely.
And there was a study done way before I got here. I don't even remember what year it was, but I read it where they recommended the number of officers we needed then, we're still not there. It, it's not something, will it help? Yes. Is, does there have to be a human component to work with artificial intelligence and, and all these calls? Absolutely, because this is not a call center. If we were a call center, we'd just do all AI. But somebody has to actually go out and lay hands on these cars and these people. I just think that what it does is it makes a more efficient use of our time. It makes a more efficient use of our staffing. And it helps us be better at, at what we really want to do and that's make things a lot safer. That doesn't mean that we're going to do, if you approve this Matt, that does not mean we're going to come back next year and ask for twelve, fifteen officers. No. But I'm not going to sit here and lie to you basically. And tell you that I'm not coming back and ever asking for another officer because we are.
For many reasons.
We're growing.
But it reminds me of years ago, we had this discussion about bike thefts, right? Bicycle, which I mean, is a big deal to a lot of, if your bike gets stolen, it's terrible. But at the time, we were kind of like, man, it's almost cheaper just to buy the person new bike than to send an officer out, take the report, go through all that. You know, I mean, true story, and this will help with stuff like that, is kind of where you're getting at, right? We can get the, the fights, the stuff like that while we're still taking the human element to, you know, to take care of our citizens and, and have them feel that they live in a safe community. Another neat thing I heard, it sounds like this do a lot of crime analysis for us. I mean, again, we still need the human element in that, but this would probably categorize a lot and help, help get that a lot quicker. Is that, is that the case?
Yeah, I believe it will. I think with the Flock Nova, where we're working over several different platforms, it'll bring everything under one umbrella. And we'll be able to, to better analyze our calls for service, crime types and who we're catching.
And the new thing, I will jump in, the new thing, the new product that they're bringing out, they call night shift. And the reason they call it night shift is it's working while you're asleep. And it analyzes, if you put in the information, it analyzes the information from your call, goes into all your calls in your, in your CAD system and pulls out light calls. So it connects crimes. And not only that, then the next morning you come in and it goes, you know, good morning, Mark McCrory. This is what we found. This is what we believe your next steps ought to be in your investigation. So it, it, it's amazing. That's why I'm excited. It, it, it's mind-blowing to me. It's Buck Rogers and I just aged myself. But it's Buck Rogers stuff.
Because like you said, the downtown incidents that you guys just, you guys made an arrest, thank you. And you know, we have a suspect in custody, but that could have helped with that. Also the park vandalism. And I commend you guys on looking at it as a global, a global solution for the entire city, right? And you managed to say, hey, we have eight hundred thousand dollars worth of camera products. And if we put all those in, we're still going to be running back and forth trying to figure out, oh, let me grab this camera and this camera, you know, from different types of systems. The other thing you talked about is your, your, your real-time information center. And I want to ask, do you have a place, do we have a physical place for this already? We're going to have to build a new building or?
No, we, we have a place. Chief Keane was nice enough and thought enough value in this that he gave up the communication room in our building and moved his things out of there so that we could operate as a, operate in there. We've had Flock experts come in and said it's the perfect example, or the perfect location because it's right off our EOC. When if something really big did happen, perfect place for it, right? So no, all, all ours is an internal buildup. We have the room. We're getting it ready right now. So if this does pass eventually, we can do, do a plug and play. And that's why we've been working with IT.
And then like just with the license plate readers, I, you know, we, we spoke about this briefly before. And I was like, we already have them. And he go, Matt, we can't tell like, once we catch them, we don't know if they go right or left, north or south. You know, we lose them if we only have twenty-two cameras. He goes, this allows us to do it. And then my next question was, what are you going to do with all this data, thirty days? So people don't have to worry about, we're keeping track of all their movements. It's automatically purged after thirty days.
And, and keep in mind on that too, I think Brian touched on that. Anybody wants to question who's looking at what? We have an audit trail. This system has an audit trail and they have to have a case number to look at it. So it, it's, it's kept, that's kept for long, that's kept forever. That's not a thirty-day window. But if something is not of evidentiary value, it's gone. And there's no going back to it. And we've talked about that, about people thinking about Big Brother. But on this system, anybody that looks at it, you know who looked at it, you know what time they looked at it, you know what they looked at. And.
That's another. And then again, like what's the, what's the buildup, how you kind of plan the budget? That gives us time to future cast so we can prepare because we're pretty much covered for the first few years if we go forward with this. Thank you guys and that was a fantastic presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
Good questions.
You talked about access to private cameras. What does that process look like if you needed to access them?
So, so we have a community website. You would get on the website, you click a button. If you're a school and it would connect you with Flock and Flock would come out and install the gateway. We're already in conversations with the elementary school district.
High school.
With the high school, for example, the high school, they have two hundred and seventy cameras throughout their campuses. I don't know that we need to see all two hundred and seventy. So we would like to come out and have a conversation about which cameras we think would be beneficial. And also what you think would be beneficial. So it, it's a very seamless process.
And then as far as private cameras, like home cameras, that's where you'd have to give permission before you would be able to access those as well.
Yeah, so we have an email associated with that. It would go to the officer working in the real-time information center and then they would reach out. And beyond that, I don't know because we haven't, we haven't got that far.
But what we do now is if a crime happens on XY street, we knock on every door. And we just hope that somebody's going to open the door and somebody has a camera. What this does is it gives us the, the opportunity for me at my house to say to the police department, hey, I've got a ring camera. You can access it, you know, you can come get it. So that if there's a crime happening there, then you know where to go because you have that access already and you already have that information available.
In cities where they already have this whole program set up, what has been the decrease in crime? Do you have any data for that?
I can tell you that there is a lot of real-time crime centers that have been started, especially like throughout Maricopa County. I can get you some data and get back to you on that one.
I would just be interested to kind of see the impact that it has.
Absolutely, yeah, I would love to. You know, especially like, you know, also with like the DFR program, we would build a public facing website as well. It would show the number of calls that the drones have responded to, what type of calls they were. And you can also take a look at the flight paths, you know, if somebody like sees a drone in the neighborhood and what, are curious as to what they're responding to or what the flight path was, they can see that what the purpose of it was as well. So lots of transparency and public facing stuff as well.
I, I think it, it sounds like a great program for sure.
I appreciate that.
I just want to, I mean, you guys have obviously put a lot of effort into this. I appreciate that, so thank you guys. I've been watching the Flock guys, they haven't jumped at anything you've said, so you must have gotten pretty close to the right.
Verstone Cole.
Yeah, these are that are, that are really good at, you know, poker face. So no, just thank you, appreciate the guys' effort on this. I like the program, so.
Apologize for interjecting, actually. I've been talking for the entire team here, but I've got someone with firsthand experience, so I'll let Matt introduce himself.
Sure.
Good evening Council, my name is Matt Patton. I'm a real-time consulting manager for Flock. New to the team, but not new to real-time. I retired after twenty-five years with New Orleans as a lieutenant and I built and ran our real-time crime center there. And what I can say about a program like this is you don't really know what you don't know. January one, we had a terrorist attack on Bourbon Street. Those eyes in the skies meant a lot to us. We were able to triage the scene, get EMS where they needed to go. And because of that, and excuse me, I get a little emotional, it was, it was a lot. Because of that, we were able to actually save more lives. So, programs like this do, do work, I know firsthand. So, just wanted to share that little story.
And, and it's amazing because of course we've all witnessed that, you know, when we watch these stories that happen and you never know when it's going to be your community. And so you hope you're ready. So, no, appreciate it Chief, thank you for the detailed presentation. Obviously there's, you know, things that we have to work through as far as just budgeting, how we can do this. Staffing, I had just a few questions on that. You know, when you talked about officers and how we plan for the future and how we're going to manage that budget. But our, our legislators are here, so I mean, we can get more money from them to help us, right? So good, good timing. So, but no, so, but no, well, you know, definitely looks good. I just, you know, of course, you know, we, technology is what it is today, but the human element is still so important. And so I know you made one comment on, you know, the efficiency of our police officers, that you don't want to waste their time going out to a call. But we still need that visibility and we need to make sure that whatever we do, we have, that the community needs to see officers here, our, you know, how the response is. So I would like to see, you know, if we're, if we're responding with a drone or something else, how are we letting that person that made the, the nine-one-one call or it, you know, was dispatched, you know, whatever? Just that, that communication piece on how we interact.
And Mayor, if I might, this is definitely going to take an educational component, public education.
Right.
I think for the majority of people, and I'm, and I'm guessing on this, but my opinion is that I think they would rather have our officers going to calls where they're needed.
Right.
And spending time on calls where they're really needed than go by a convenience store and find out the two guys that were drunk and fighting, they're gone. That's what I'm talking about, the efficiency. I think this will allow our officers to be more communicative with victims because they're going to be allowed to, they're going to spend more time with people who really need us. Instead of doing a drive-by, hey, this is so-and-so, they're gone. But there's definitely an educational component with this that we've already been talking about. We've, Flock is, has a great group of people that puts this information out and we can scale it to how it fits Casa Grande. We have our own, we have, you know, Thomas Anderson. We've been talking about this at, at meetings and talking about this with individuals. But I think that the personal component is always going to be there. I just think it's going to allow us more time to spend time on calls where people really need us versus on when they don't need us. And I think that's going to be a big factor. And I think it's like anything else, I think people are going to get accustomed to the technology. You know, I hope. And if they don't, then we're not doing what we need to do.
And then one last question, because I know we're running a little bit late here. As far as the community feedback, you did have a, a community meeting, you have the downtown, you know, businesses and as well as our community medium, meeting. How did it go with people when you were talking to them about it?
Well downtown, the, the, the good thing about the downtown meeting, and I, I wasn't able to be at that one, but we sent officers to that, was that, and Brian and I talked about this afterwards, what's perfect about that meeting, it shows that the community wants to get involved in their own safety. It shows that they want to work with the police department. It shows that they care about what happens in this city, right? But what fits this program is everything they talked about, about sharing footage, sharing information, that's exactly what this program's about. And, and we've talked and we do it, like I think I've already said this, but we've done it till we're both tired of doing it. When a crime goes out, we're like, we'd have a camera there. You know, and I think what they did downtown is great. It's a good, it's a good step. And I think with this program and, and our cooperation with downtown, I think it's going to be a safer, safer area for everybody. And I think that meeting went well. I know at, at the meeting we had the other night at Dorothy Powell, they had nothing but positive things to say about that, at least to us. And, and I came away from there feeling like I felt pretty good about it, honestly.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you for the presentation. So let's see, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the study sessions. You guys need a break for five minutes. Are we ready to go? Break, okay, since we had a, a long study session, we're going to take a five-minute break really quick and we'll be right back.